Good evening. I'd like to call the regular Board of Education meeting on board. Please rise if in place. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America and to the Constitution of our liberty, of our nation, of our God, and of his little but the great justice for all. Kelly, please perform the uniform.
The floor is here. Ms. Hewer.
Here.
Ms. Fatchen.
Here.
Mr. Kasten.
Here.
Mr. Singh.
Here.
Mr. Wolf.
Present.
Mr. Zoff.
Here.
Ms. Gadston.
Here.
Mr. Wright.
Here.
Fire exits, please.
Emergency exits, sir, back at the LGM.
All right, tonight we have two workshops. The first workshop is going to be Dr. Richard Hooly from Dutchess County Bosse's. Welcome, Dr. Hooly.
So first of all, I'd like to thank you for allowing me to come to your meeting. I know these agendas are full, and I would like to leave a little time at the end of questions and answers if that's possible, and if you have to move on, then you can talk to your superintendent. You can get questions to me. So again, my name is Richard Hooly, district superintendent of Dutchess Bosse's. I've just finished my second year, and I've embarked on my third, so we're happy to have Dr. Landl here, so that I'm not the newest administrator in the county. Thank you for that. Just a quick overview of Bosse's services that your students participate in for this year. You have a total of 79 students from Beacon, working in some form or fashion with Dutchess Bosse's. Forty-seven of those students are involved in career technical courses. Nine attend the Salt Point Center. Salt Point Center is a K-8 school on our main campus, and it serves primarily students with special needs, but there are some general education students there as well. We have 12 students in our Beta program. Beta is the alternative high school that's on a separate site on Route 44. It's actually an industrial park, and they have had, for I think 25 years, a big portion of a building rented for our alternative high school. And what's unique about that particular alternative high school is that we have counselors from Auster on-site, so students can come there and get their regular academic coursework and work independently toward Regent's courses and high school equivalency, but they also have counselors there who take them as part of their daily curriculum. You have five students placed in districts, and these are Bosse's classrooms that are cited or located in school districts. So there really are programs, but sometimes it helps avoid a long bus ride, or it makes sense because of the concentration of students with special needs in that part of the county. We have students that are getting services from three of our itinerant staff, or three students that are getting services from our itinerant staff. Itinerant staff are staff that you may share with another school district, or you may share across a couple of different buildings in your district. And for Bosse's, when you have shared services, there is a benefit both to you and to us, because you don't have to hire a part-time person, and we can kind of piece that together and make it whole. In the case of special ed, there's not extra Bosse's aid, but in other things like COSERS, when there's shared services, there is a Bosse's aid that comes back to you the following year. So the purpose of this meeting is really just to open the lines of communication and make sure that you know we're here, and that we want to take an opportunity each year to come and answer questions if we can, and if you ask some questions tonight that I can't answer, I'm happy to get back in touch with you with the answers. I also want to review some of the initiatives and things that are going on that are new for us at Dutchess Bosse's. So we're very, very excited about having a new principal at our Salt Point Center. That's the K-8 program that I talked about. Her name is Melissa Murphy, the new principal. She comes to us from a private special education setting in New York City, and those private placements are very highly regulated, as you can imagine, because they're often expensive, and so people who are sending kids, they really want to make sure that all those regulations are followed to a T. So she's terrific in terms of looking at our program and saying, are we doing everything we ought to be doing and doing it right? But maybe more important than that, her specialty, her area of expertise, is behavior. And for a lot of the kids that are in our Salt Point Center, although they may have some cognitive delays or other things going on, behavior is often the reason that they come to us instead of remaining with component school districts. She actually teaches as an adjunct at Hunter College in that area of behavior, so we're excited to have her, and she's been a great addition. We also have a new director of special education at Dutchess Bosse's. Dutchess Bosse's is the only Bosse's that I ever heard of that didn't have a director of special education. So last year, we had a director of educational programs, which was kind of a generalist position. We abolished that position so that we could use those funds to fill this position. So Denise Jakowski is our new director of special ed. Her name is spelled D-Z-I-K, et cetera, but it pronounces if it were a J, Jakowski. And she actually presented for the Dutchess County School Boards last Thursday, and I think did a pretty good job. She comes to us with a lot of experience, and it's very important for the Bosse's to have easy communications with your directors of pupil personnel and your directors of special education, and that is made much easier when we have our own director of special ed. And she has, as I said, a great deal of experience and background in that area. In our schools for the last two years, last year and this, we have focused on literacy as a way of improving student understanding and knowledge and improving their learning. So if you think about it, you might say, CTI, aren't those kids working with their hands? Well, they are, but if you have ever looked at a owner's manual or any kind of industrial publication, you know that they are very dense and very difficult to read. So not only in our CTI, but also in our Salt Point Center and in our alternative high school, literacy is a new focus, and tomorrow for us, I don't know about you, we're having Superintendent's Conference Day, and that continues that focus. So we're expecting to see improvements in student achievement based on that focus for the last two years. One of the other things that Bosse's does is provides professional development for component school districts. Sometimes that's administrators, sometimes that's teachers, sometimes that's clerical staff. In the area of professional development, we are working to up our game and become both more relevant and more cutting-edge in that work. It may take us some time, but we've succeeded in bringing some major names and educational thinkers to the county. Several weeks ago, Chris Emden, who speaks about effectively teaching minority children in urban settings, presented at Dutchess Bosse's, and I believe Beacon, I think you said like a good number of people, like more than a dozen, so we appreciate that. He was terrific, by the way. You have also requested Father Recio to do an overview of the new science standards and the social studies frameworks which are coming down the pike, and I think this summer about seven of your administrators attended a work with Irene Fontas, and we were very happy to have Irene. She's probably one of the biggest names in early literacy in the country, and that was well-attended. I was able to join that, all of these workshops for a short period of time, and they're quite good. So those are the highlights. There's obviously more going on, but I'll take a few questions if it won't interrupt the board meeting too much.
Sure. Does anybody have any questions about the services?
The drawback is your location, of course, because it takes a long time for our students to get there, back and forth, and it also means that they can't really participate in any, you know, activities in our schools, high school especially, like, you know, after school or sports, things like that. Any thoughts to having a southern satellite or integrating some programs back into the districts where it makes sense?
To his credit, your new superintendent had that conversation with me, I believe, on our first meeting, so I certainly understand it's a concern of the boards. It's an interesting challenge. We are certainly not averse to doing that. In some ways, we want to get our legs under us before we start doing some of that. We have some kind of crazy expenditures in Dutchess Bosse's. For example, the data building that we've been renting for the last 25 years. Those kinds of costs that are unrelenting make it more difficult to be innovative in doing a satellite in Beacon or a satellite in the eastern corridor. So we hope that we'll be coming to talk to you about some ways to ameliorate that rental space and look at some long-term solutions, and by doing that, it makes a lot of sense to do some of those satellites. Your circumstance is not so unusual as, let's say, Weetok, which suffers the same thing in the other direction. So we hear it and we understand it, and although this sounds counterintuitive, if we could consolidate in one location, there would be some savings there that might allow us to do some more innovative things in satellites. Right now, 10 miles away, we have our alternative high school, so there's some expense to doing that, whether you're running internet or whether you're busing kids to two places. So we hope to figure out some ways to help with that, and I'll be talking to you more about that later on.
Any other questions?
I just wonder if you could, it's really exciting to hear about the professional development changes, and I think that's going to be great. Can you speak a little bit more about the focus on literacy, what that looks like, what you guys are actually doing?
Well, ours is probably a little different from what it might look like for Beacon. What we know is that, so I'm going to put on a different kind of hat. Once upon a time, I worked in a component district, and the Fontas and Pennell benchmarking, which kind of helps you understand where the kids start the year, and then using the kinds of balanced literacy pieces that have been shown to be effective for research, and that would be guided reading, interactive read-alouds, phonetic awareness, some of those kinds of things. So when Irene Fontas came, she kind of talked about what that looks like and how you can't do this in four or five minutes. You've got to kind of do it in a block of time, and it really has to be a focus. So for us, just to be as honest as I can be, we have had lots of assessments in reading at Salt Point Center, but we haven't had a lot of staff instruction about how you do it, right? So we've got all kinds of test scores, all kinds of data, but to get from point A to point B, we haven't spent the time and the money and the effort to work with teachers whose real focus has always been special ed, but we need to make it special ed and literacy. So I don't know if that answers it fully, but...
It definitely does.
Thanks.
Any other questions?
I just have one. I'm sorry I'm not as prepared for it as I wanted to be. I forgot you were going to be here, and then I wanted to find out which district had this program, but I know, I think it's either Sullivan, or it might be further north where they have a sustainability shared services model.
A what?
A sustainability person, like a manager who is shared between districts.
Oh.
And I guess there's been a lot of savings that have been demonstrated for those component districts, and so I was just wondering if that's something that you've considered. I think it's Sullivan, but I can't...
I think you're right.
Okay.
So Sullivan, because partly by virtue of how Sullivan sits and who makes up the Sullivan Bosse's, they have many, many small school districts, very small, and I know that because I used to work in one of them as a principal. And what they have been able to do is to sell business office services, so that you might have accounts payable, and that person works in two districts. And remember I said earlier, if you have a shared service, you get Bosse's aid on it. Now, I will say that Sullivan is really the winner of the sweepstakes, because a lot of people started it and did it for a while and couldn't do it well, or it didn't work, and it went away. And I think that's true down south of here in Rockland, and it's true of some other Bosse's. So it's certainly doable and workable, but you have to, I would suggest, you have to have a good, strong business office to have some portions of that done by someone who's not there every day. So payroll, for example, could be a challenge for you, but accounts payable might work, and payroll could actually work too nowadays, and everything is...
This is a slightly different program. I'll follow up with the superintendent. I'll get the information and send it to him. It's about energy efficiency.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry.
And cost savings on a facility level. I think Sullivan's done, there's a lot of, there's a report recently that they saved a lot of money for their component districts with this person, but I...
So I'll be happy to do the research. Thank you. Sorry about that.
It's okay.
After the race...
I didn't want him to think I was suddenly...
Any other questions?
You said the total number of students are 97?
Seventy-nine.
Seventy-nine. Okay. So, and then you said 79...
Seventy-six, actually. I'm sorry.
All right, seventy-six, then it was 40...
Forty-seven are career tech.
Forty-seven, nine, 12, five, and three, right?
Yes.
That doesn't...
Did I have a problem?
Yeah, that doesn't...
I'm sorry. Sixteen, eighteen, sixteen, six...
Oh, it does that? Okay.
I'm an English teacher by trade, so it wouldn't be the first time.
No, no.
Okay, it does that. I'm sorry. Okay, good. All right.
Literacy, not...
So the 47 CTE folks, they, is there, is there a specific program that you think our kids might want, or...
You know, they don't give me the details. They want me to be kind of a surface guy, but we obviously could get that information. I know that when I go visit classes, I often ask what schools the kids are from, and I know you have a number of kids in the, I think you have a number of kids in the culinary program, and I believe in the, we're in the throes of designing the Christmas card for Bosse's, and I think you have a student or two in the graphic arts, but I couldn't speak beyond that with any knowledge. I can get it for you if you'd like.
Any other questions?
Yes, 47 in the CTE, that's one of those educational acronyms, career and technical education, right?
Right. Career and Technical Institute is what we call it at CTE.
CTE, I think, yeah, okay. So 47, but we have about 800-some students in the high school. This is about 5 percent. I'm surprised that it's such a low percentage, given the breadth of offerings that you have.
Well, I'll say the distance is certainly a factor. I'm sure if we were closer, that might be easier for them and for you. I don't know. Many high schools probably, and I bet, I'm guessing, but I bet Beacon High School offers some career and tech kind of vocational courses on its own. We didn't offer many, but there are some that might be offered locally, like business courses and things like that. And we have not been particularly good Bosse's at communicating with boards and guidance counselors, and we're trying to change that and improve it. So we hope. Our numbers are actually up across the county, about 82 kids this year in our CTI program, so that's exciting for us.
How many?
Up 82 kids across the whole county. Whole county.
About how many in the total CTI program would you say?
Well, we have a morning session and afternoon session, so we have about, I think 400 is close. So the morning session are the seniors, and there's fewer of those, and the afternoon session are the juniors. So, thank you.
All right, well, thank you very much. We appreciate it. Thank you for coming down south.
I appreciate it.
All right. Our next workshop is Mr. Brian Archer, and he's going to be presenting on his Sargent plan.
Before Brian begins, I just wanted to briefly talk about participation rates. One of the things that his plan focuses on, focuses on is participation rates on testing. Some of the board members, myself, were able to attend the NISBA convention when Mary Ellen Gilia spoke to the floor for about an hour. A lot of the questions she took was around changes that the state has made regarding testing. And so I think some of these changes are pretty positive. I think I'm going to get them right. We're down to two days instead of three. It's kind of decoupled, at least temporarily, from teacher evaluations. The tests are also become untimed. I think one of the jobs for us in the district this year is to try to communicate those changes across the whole district. People not participating in testing, I don't see personally as an issue that's just at Sargent Elementary, so, and it's not an issue that's just in Beacon for sure. It's something that's across the state. I came from a district that was probably in the 20% opt-out rate. I think Beacon's somewhat similar. So I just wanted to say that from the district perspective. A, we don't see this as just an issue at Sargent, and B, I think one of the things that we can do as a district is to communicate those changes to the state. Now, whether that is effective at changing people's minds, you know, is kind of left to be seen, but I know from my experience, some people are more kind of willing to have their minds changed on this issue, and others are a little bit more either passionate or sort of stuck with their thinking, and so we will do some of this effort as a district. I just wanted to preface this because I don't feel great having one principal talk about opt-out rates when it's something that's across all of our school and it's across all of the state. And I may have had my own issues five or six years ago when everything was rolled out, but I really do think the Regent's and the commissioner have done a really good job of listening, and the way she communicated to board members across the state, I think was really positive in regards to those changes. So I know that will not be the bulk of what Brian presents tonight, but I just wanted to put that part out there, because I think it's important for us to communicate those things as a district. So Brian, thanks for letting me in, and go right on ahead.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Landl. Thank you, Board of Education, for allowing me to talk with all of you about our plans for our school this year, and I suppose I'll start with the participation question. When our team of teachers and a parent, myself and Mr. Wright, got together, the first question we were talking about was, how do we get more parents to have their kids take these tests? And we, we're not quite sure how to answer that question, so I asked the teachers and the parent who was on our committee to go out and ask parents of kids in our building, like, what is it you don't like about these tests? What is it you're afraid to have your kids take these tests? And because of math, we're cited for math, math performance for our students with disabilities this year. So we focused our questions on the parents of our subgroups, and what we learned was lots of parents want to sit down with their kids and help them with their math homework, but because of the changes in, you know, the core curriculum and the modules and so forth, a lot of the parents are telling us they don't know how to do the math. And so we took that information, and we're trying to incorporate that into our plan as we get through the year, and we want to do some presentation to parents, invite them in for some workshops on, you know, what the homework is with their kids, give them tips. So we're trying to address the concerns and, based on what they've told us. So I suppose I'll start with that. Anyway, over the past few years, or several years anyway, our nice school has narrowed several of the achievement gaps that have been present in our, in our kids taking these tests. In '15, '16, our building was cited for ELA testing, students with disabilities, economically disadvantaged, and a large part of our professional development and work with kids focused on, you know, the Steph Harvey, the Fontas and Pennell, the benchmarking, looking at data. And what we've seen is we've gotten better incrementally each year across the board with not only all the kids in our subgroups, but all the kids, because what has worked in our focus with our students with disabilities, that's been good practice for everybody, for all the teachers, and we've seen that payoff. This year, we made safe harbor for the ELA testing data, so that's good progress. We still have work to do with our, with our math testing. We can look for improvement. Anyway, the process that we took for coming up with this plan and what we're hoping to do this year is that we had a committee of three teachers, a parent, Mr. Wright, myself, and also Cecilia was helpful in the process as well. I should have included her. We consulted with Ms. Candello and PPS with specifics to this plan. She and I sat down. We talked about the plan. We talked about activities. We talked about a focus on math at the two monthly meetings we've had with our specialized teachers so far this year. Our PPS team met three times. The first meeting was, we were venting about how to, you know, why do we have to put this plan together? We've worked hard. We've shown lots of improvement. But then we started thinking, well, this is, this is, we're going to turn this into a positive thing, because this is going to help us focus on what's good for kids and what's good for instruction. The second meeting we had, we focused on putting the answers on the paper, and when we ended that meeting, I went back and I typed it up, and then we met for a third time, and we finalized the document that I presented to you. The process to get state approval is, we present the plan to you. Hopefully, you approve it. It goes on our website. That makes the state happy, and throughout the course of the year, we work towards fulfilling our goals and our plan and our work. All right, so some of our successes that are directly related to what we're cited for and what we've been cited for. Last year, we piloted EZCBM across the building in each of the grades with all the teachers and all the kids, and EZCBM is a benchmarking and progress monitoring tool, and that gives us different points of data with literacy and math to help us look at kids and how we can group kids for better instruction. And this year, we rolled out the EZCBM at the beginning of June, and we're going to do it through, all the way through the end of the year, and we're doing it for all of our classes, and so far, it's helping us in our RTI meetings. It's helping us communicate with parents about the kids' needs, and the teachers are also talking with the kids about their performance as well. Not, maybe not necessarily like the kindergartners, but certainly the fourth and fifth graders. Another practice that we've, we've done well and we've gotten better and better at is our classrooms are student-responsive. Our teachers embrace and practice what kids need, and if we have to make adaptions and changes to help kids, the teachers do that. It's not just a one-size-fits-all plan with our teachers. We've improved our STEM instruction in our building, not only in our library and media, but in our classrooms as well. We've implemented K-5 reading plus in all of our classrooms, and we've, you know, I have to thank the board, central office, and Mr. Fishin for, you know, we've doubled our laptop carts in the building. Each of our classrooms has a smart TV, smart board, so we've come a long ways, and at the start of the year, because we increased all the, all this technology, we were finding that some of the classrooms were kind of slow getting onto laptops, so again, that department came over and, you know, boosted up the access for the kids to get onto the computers, so that's been very helpful. Our co-teach classrooms are staffed by great teachers. They work well together. They collaborate well together. Very enjoyable going into those classrooms. And we have a literacy vision that we created last year, and we refer to it, and here it is. I don't know if you can see that. Our literacy vision is to create a community of students who are confident, passionate, and engaged readers and writers. We want to do that for math, too. Anyway, areas for us to hone in on, again, the... Again, the, the student input engagement, improve the partnerships with the subgroup parents. Probably shouldn't call subgroups because we wanna increase our communication with all of our parents and really reach out and encourage them to encourage their kids to take these tests. We wanna create a math vision with student and parent input. We're going to create a data team, we're in the process of that, and create a schedule of meetings for progress monitoring, RTI meetings, grade level meetings, and, uh, really look at how the student achievement data can help reinforce the interventions through the RTI process for our, for our kids. We're gonna focus on professional development for center-based math activities. And a goal that we spent quite a bit of time talking about was, you know, kids love the hands-on activities that the STEM or the STEAM allows. We wanna make it more accessible for all of our kids. Some of the work that is in motion right now. The EZCBM, that's, that's across the board in the building, and that's part of the plan. We're doing data, data reviews at grade level meetings and RTI meetings. And the, the way we're looking at data is different than how we've done it in the past. Um, we were asking teachers to show us and demonstrate the interventions before going to RTI. That's, that's been pretty eye-opening this year. Again, we've improved the STEM instruction and accessibility for all of our students, and we still have a ways to go on that. Teachers have expressed interest in working with parents in different ways, so that is something we are seeing. But that's a positive thing that I've learned from our, our staff this year is they really wanna engage with parents and work with them, I mean, not only on the testing, but we want them engaged more in our schools, in our school in particular. Um, again, the, the K-five reading plus is in motion. And, um, we're, at least I'm, I'm seeing a larger awareness from our teachers on, um, like a common math language and testing skills. That's been nice. Anyway, questions and comments. Um, these are just some of the things that I've been asked from parents and teachers. Um, why, why is Sargent cited for participation this year and not last year? I'm not, I'm not an expert on how the state comes up with these lap, uh, why we have to do lap plans. But the, the best answer I have learned about is if a school was a lap school last year and that school is a lap school this year, they look at the participation rates for that school. Um, another question, what, Dr. Landau sort of asked, answered already. What is the state doing to help schools improve student participation? How do we engage parents differently? You know, we, we've, we self-reflected on that. And, you know, again, you know, we have worked hard to improve. Why is Sargent still a lap school? That question is, it takes a couple of years for a school to not be a lap school. So, we just have to work our way off it, which, that's what we're doing. So, that's my presentation. That's the highlights of this nice document.
Any questions?
Just, I just wanted to briefly mention a little word before, yeah, um, go to questions. That Eric Wright is here and he can also answer questions about, um, the plan because he was involved with aspects of it. Celia, um, was planning on being here and a last minute thing came up and so she can't. Uh, but Eric will, will fill in on, on some of the district levels up in terms of questions, too.
Any other questions particular to the lap? Jer, um, sorry, Ken?
Um, so my first, thank you, Mr. Archer.
You're welcome.
Um, so I just had a question. I see that, um, the oversight seems to be across the board. But is there any special, um, or extra oversight, um, being paid to the children who, um, are the focus of the plan? So, uh, the children who are, I forgot the language because I just lost my head, but I think it's children who are...
Economically disadvantaged, children with disabilities.
Right, children with disabilities.
Okay.
So, is there any special attention being paid to those students, um, rather than just like this across the board kind of thing? Cause then...
Well, the, the subgroups sort of, they go all over our building. So, it's hard just to focus on one group because you're gonna have kids in one classroom, you have kids in another classroom. And, you know, there might be kids who are economically disadvantaged, but are, that they don't have IEPs. Like, you know, that focuses on, should be on everybody.
In addition, one of the things that we looked at, uh, we talked about, uh, when we were looking at the plan is, um, uh, creating center-based activities as Mr. Archer spoke about, um, earlier. When we create these center-based activities, what it does is it gives the opportunity to differentiate the instruction for those students. You know, students with disabilities, for instance. So, um, that's gonna be a major support moving forward. As well as like when we get, um, when we, uh, when we purchase or purchase a lot of the online web-based programs as well.
Any other questions?
I had a, oh, I had a, I just wanted to, um, it's not a question you have to answer. Uh, just wanted to ask, um, since you had a parent on this committee, but then there are these subgroups that I understand students are all over the school, but there seemed to be a directive that you do some outreach and find out about why, uh, people weren't participating or they were opting their children out. If that, and since this is a district-wide issue, um, if that data was gathered and, um, if you could share it with the other schools, um, it might be useful to getting to the heart of that issue. Just a suggestion.
Craig?
Uh, yeah, question and then a couple of comments. Um, I noticed that the, the program calls for trying to engage parents. And we were cited on the students with disabilities in particular, I think that stuck out. Um, it occurs to me that it's not easy for parents to engage with school people all the time. They have jobs. And if you have a kid with special needs, you've probably got your plate fairly full to start with. Um, so perhaps there's some way of more specific outreach. If you can't get somebody to come in, maybe somebody needs to go out and visit. Um, everybody seems to have their preferred methods of communication these days. Some people like email, others don't. Some people text all the time. You know, we're very multimodal. Perhaps those are some ideas that might help with that particular, uh, shortcoming, which I can understand. A lot of times, we'd like to think that parents are just extremely interested in their kids, and they are. But it's an extra layer of having to do something with the school district, too. So, I wish you luck. Uh, the two comments, number one, these are both in your favor, by the way. Number one, this program is something we have to, to deal with. That doesn't mean that we all like it or think that it's really good. I think there's a lot of flaws and weaknesses in the state program that we have to put up with. I'll just leave it at that. But the other thing I noticed, uh, reading the, uh, notes of what's in the papers, it's, that's not always in the papers. A lot of stuff is online these days. And I came across this article, actually by way of the Kipsey Journal, but it emanates from the Rochester Democratic Chronicle, which did some research and created something they call the New York School Quality Index. And if you drill down online, you can find everything about all the individual schools, districts, and individual buildings. And they look at attendance, suspensions, class size, diversity, and teacher experience, which is entirely a different thing than what the state assessments are looking at. And interestingly enough, uh, with the exception of Beacon High School, which scored sixty-seven point five, all of our schools scored above the median. The state median was seventy-seven point five. Roundabout was eighty point eight, Forestville was eighty point five, South Avenue was eighty-four point eight, Leno was eighty-six point three, and Sargent was eighty-eight point eight. So, according to them, you're doing pretty good.
Yes, that's, that's refreshing to hear. Thank you.
Any other questions? Doug?
The, uh, the one section of the, uh, of the, uh, plan where you talk about the actions that need to occur in the, in this current school year, um, you know, early in the year. So, um, I just want to know what, what the confidence level is that they actually will occur in this school year, uh, if they haven't occurred already. If you want, I can read them off to you if you have to.
Are we looking at, uh, number seven?
Yes.
Yeah. Um, in terms of actions, the implementation, the EZCBM, that's in process. The RTI, the RTI data team subcommittee, that, that'll be happening soon. Um, the improvement in communication partnership with parents. Uh, we're, we're gonna do some, uh, specific activities to address that as best we can. Um, I, I've already recruited a couple of teachers who will say yes. Um, the data team is a subcommittee, that's gonna happen. And the last one, the decrease in the class sizes.
That's not really under your control.
I, I'm hoping.
Oh, you can, you can identify it, but yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Anthony, a question or request, uh, but, um, thanks for the help.
You're welcome.
On the, I was wondering if you can explain, um, well, my request is, uh, what I remember from last year is that, um, you said, uh, the year before was math-focused and last year was ELA, and now we're back to math. Um, I kinda would like to know, uh, um, results of the plan that we've done before to see what worked or didn't work. I'm sure there were some things that did work, um, as we progress forward and how it influences the next generation of the plan. But also, my question is, can you explain, I guess, why we flipped between math and the ELA?
Hard, it's hard for me to pinpoint why it's math and not ELA. I know the opt-out rates were smaller for the ELA than they were for the math because the math was the second test. Uh, and our thought pattern and focusing a lot of our professional development on literacy and getting materials for reading, um, the, the thought pattern was, well, it's gonna improve reading, so it's gonna help with their, with their math work as well. Um, I, I think our focus needs to hone in on like interactive math and set, math centers and so forth. So, yeah, I mean, we missed the cutoff by four points. You know, one or two more kids taking the test might've got us over the hump, might've, I don't know. So, good question. Thank you.
Mike did have a question.
Yeah, a question. So, what are, what are the consequences of not meeting the participation rate? What does that cause us to do other than develop this lap plan? And I understand that we, we're not having correct participation, which is not good. But what are the other consequences? Is there fines or anything else the state does to us?
Um, there, there are no consequences like that that I know of for this, for a lap.
Okay. Um, did, did, was this new this year? There was, was, is, was there prior, previously a participation, uh, metric?
Two years ago.
I wanna say two years ago, but it was...
The ones I've, the ones I dealt with, I, we did not have a, in my prior district, we didn't have a participation rate once. This is new for me, but like Anthony said, I think it started a year ago. But it's just for schools in lap? Uh, that's why I said what I said. There's schools in the state that have like fifty percent of the kids opting out. But if they're not in lap, they're not being asked to come up with a plan to remediate. It's just kind of an interesting thing.
You're on the web.
One of the specific things that the Commissioner said at NISBA's convention was there was a board member that got up and spoke about, um, they were a high-performing district in Long Island. And they said, you know, our participation is only twenty percent, not twenty percent opt-out, twenty percent participation. Um, but they're a high-cheating school district. And the Commissioner made it quite clear that they're focusing on an academic part for the lower five percent of the state and that even if your participation is, you know, not there in your high-cheating school district, that there's not gonna be accountability. And I know that there's still advisory scores where they decouple the, um, APPR to the state test scores. And it's still, it's supposed to go until two thousand nineteen?
Nineteen, yeah.
Inside, um, and they're looking to expand that because that legislation came up that, not the state department.
Okay, uh, thank you. One other question is, um, it sounds like you're, you're, you're not totally confident or not totally sure about your plan about how to increase the participation rate. So, I was wondering if there's a, um, if we can get, when a good time would be to get an update on how they're progressing with some of the communications and other strategies that they're having in the plans? We're not waiting till next year.
Yeah.
So, you know, report that they're progressing with their plan. They've kind of honed in on, on what they believe is the way to increase the participation.
I think that's a great idea. We can provide an update, I don't know, two months?
Yeah, whenever you...
Three months, something like that.
I'll leave it to you to see when the right timing is, you know, to get them placed, probably some community and hiring discussions. Yeah, so you get some feedback and...
Yeah, Ms. Rotowski, in our timeline, there's like some mid-year checklist and evaluation. So, I, I, I'd be happy to do a quick report about it.
Okay, yeah, that would be good.
Yeah, if you wanna combine, Mr. Rotowski's request or my request, I can find it. I don't know what kind of word it is, if it's a line.
So, I just had a couple of questions about the EZCBM. Is, uh, is that a district-wide curriculum-based measurement that you got? That's, or is it just, um, as Sargent?
That's just as Sargent. Um, actually, that was just part of their plan. So, they, um, they purchased it as part of their plan. We actually have purchased a district-wide EAMS Web, uh, this year. And that was because that was something that, um, a lot of the schools were familiar with in the past.
That, that was my second question. Anthony, is this taken in place of EAMS Web that the district used in the past as curriculum-based measurement?
Right, no. Uh, and right now, we just, uh, implemented, uh, we're in the process of implementing EAMS Web for our KN one.
So, is there, uh, are the teachers, um, administering the curriculum-based measurements or for EZCBM? Or is it like the school psychologists? Or is it a more of a generic program that is just a...
Teachers, the teachers are doing it.
Yeah, our, uh, this EZCBM has three times a year for benchmarking kids. And I, I set the, you know, like, uh, the timeframe for doing that. And every teacher, uh, the vet, or benchmarked every single student in the building.
So, the last question about the EZCBM. I know that EAMS Web only takes a norm of the districts that are using, uh, EAMS Web. How is EZCBM the same way or has it taken the norm of collecting data throughout the nation? Whether it were a state where only districts are prescribed to it?
But, Dad, I'm not a hundred percent sure at this moment.
Um, if I remember correctly, it, they, lots of schools in, in the country use this. Um, the, the CBM stands for curriculum-based measurement. And they, they're, they're measuring kids against kids who are, are using the product.
Only their product or is it about...
That, that I don't know. I, I don't know that answer. I, I, I'll go try to find the answer.
Yeah, no, I'm sorry. I was just kidding.
I use, and the reason like we were with EAMS Web because it is more, more so norm reference. So, that's why we went back to that product.
Right, so I just needed to know, like, you, um, you mentioned that you were, uh, you know, reaching out to parents. So, what methods are you using to reach the parents? Which is to, you know, are you sending out emails? Is it in Spanish and English? Like, what, what, how do you, what do you do?
Well, we're, we, we do all the communications that we've talked about. And we, we can certainly do a better job putting things in Spanish.
One of the things we're looking at, um, district-wide, which would be a support, you know, to, um, Sargent as well, is that, uh, we're looking to potentially have a math night. Um, you know, start the math nights again this year. And I think that once we're able to do so, what that will do is bring a lot of our elementary families out, you know, to see, um, the curriculum first and foremost, uh, which I think is super important because as they are, uh, being reintroduced to the games and then, um, the methods of, of, of doing the problems, I think that will be a support for the parents moving forward.
That was at J D F in Leno, that, that, right, they both did math nights when you...
Um, back a few years ago, I believe all four buildings actually did it, but definitely, yeah.
Eric and I have spoken about, um, just this math idea that some members of the PTO Collaborative reached out to us just about, uh, getting kind of homework help for parents across the district, especially in math at the elementary level. So, we're, again, not seeing it as a Sargent issue, but a, a district-wide issue of, of, uh, of getting parents some help with the homework part. Uh, so, so that's kind of in reference, that's, that's the plan we're working on for the whole district, too.
Yeah.
Um, we also plan, and I'll say this with Dr. Hilly sitting there, we, we need to use the, there's a, um, translation co-server that with, with BOSI's and we need to utilize it a whole lot more than we're using, utilizing it right now. So, um, and that's, that's will be part of our communication we're coming forward to.
Thank you very much.
All right, one, one other question. I, I appreciate you reminding me about the mid-year benchmark goal, and just as you could, you know, take a look at, you know, the goal for mid-year is March of twenty eighteen, that's pretty far past mid-year, so, um, I don't know if that's normal, but consider, uh, that when you're, when you're feeding back to us, March seems a little late for a new year review.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. I need a motion to adjourn to executive session to employ, uh, to re-employ the issue of particular individuals and to seek legal advice from the school attorney, state law, finding, uh, attorney-client privilege. Second. Second, comments or questions? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried now. Board's expected to return around nine o'clock. Um, we do have some corrections to the agenda, so eleven point oh three C three is a name correction. We originally had Julia and it's supposed to be Judith, the correction is appropriate on the agenda and corrected. Now eleven point oh eight, it's revised language for the motion for the step, the need for the contract or consultant. There are no other corrections to the agenda. At this time, we have school and student presentations. And student or school presentations. And parent groups.
Hello, good evening. Rebecca Corales.
Deborah Dvidivits.
We are here to just talk a little bit about Beacon Advocates for Music. We had a very lovely and successful fundraiser yesterday, um, at Denix Point Distillery. We had a wonderful time, we had a wonderful positive community building experience with our amazing band, Rhythm Rising, that came and donated their time to the event. We raised seven hundred and fifty dollars, and we're really excited about it. Just wanted to send out a little thank you to the board members who attended. Craig Wolf, thank you, Anthony who attended, Meredith and Kristin all attended our fundraiser, thank you so much. Appreciate your support. And Deb's just gonna talk a little bit about one other thing that B A M is working on right now.
So, one of our first actions is we are, um, forming a concert clothing swap at Rombell Middle School. And this is, uh, to help our kids out and our parents out, as we know our kids outgrow their clothing very quickly. And concert clothes tend not to be worn in my house, at least for things other than concerts. So, we, um, did a quick fundraiser, we managed to raise our costs, um, pretty quickly, so we had about a hundred and fifty bucks. Have purchased a, a very sturdy clothing rack, um, some hangers, some size tags, all the ingredients for a nice, uh, rack that will live on the stage in, at Rombell Middle School. I've been working with Mr. Rubenstein and working out the details with him. And now we are putting out a call for parents to donate clothing, um, middle school sizes that their kids have outgrown. Shirts, uh, pants, skirts and shoes. I believe Ms. Beakley is going to be sending something out to parents, um, asking them to send that in. And, uh, I'll be assembling all of that and then we'll be maintaining that. And kids will be able to shop for clothes for the winter concert on December sixth. So, I'm really happy because this is something that I think is really gonna help our teachers and our students. And if we're able to have this be a successful model at the middle school, then our hope is to bring this to all of the other schools as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for your support.
Thank you.
Very good. Any other parent groups? Seeing none, going to open to the public. Mister Burns signed up. Mister Burns, do we have to read the policy to you?
No, I've come, I've come in peace tonight, thank you. John Burns, Beacon Teachers Association President. I'm here tonight for a special occasion, albeit a little bit late. You see, uh, the third week in October is School Board Recognition Week. Unfortunately, or actually fortunately for me, I was spending two weeks in October with my bride in Ireland, so we couldn't present to you, uh, and show our appreciation. So while the rest of the school boards in New York State were celebrating School Board Recognition Week in October, by the powers vested in me as Beacon Teachers Association President, I have declared the week of November sixth to tenth, School Board Recognition Week in Beacon. We don't have an official resolution for that. I want you to know, just a mouthpiece, I speak for the entire B T A when I say thank you for all that you do for our kids in our district. I'd also like to let you know that the B T A P R Committee spearheads many activities, uh, for the benefit of our community and our kids, including board recognition. The four ladies on the P R Committee epitomize the spirit of our Beacon Teachers. The P R Committee this last weekend, as they've done several times this year already, were out giving bubbles in the inclement weather to our kids, uh, for the Halloween parade. Uh, and I, as I said, those four teachers epitomize what our Beacon Teachers are about, and so I'd like to recognize them for their efforts. From Glenon Elementary School, uh, Amy Frazita and Vicky Mascher on Tuato, and from Forestville Elementary School, Leslie Tompkins and Perry Lucidos. I'd most like to thank the Board of Education. Uh, I mean, when you think about where we've been the last few years, um, in the last ten years and, and where we are today, I'd like to invoke some language from the NFL Draft, uh, and I thank the Board for this because you were responsible for this. The Board of Education with the first overall pick in the superintendent search for two thousand and seventeen has chosen Matt Lando from Ithaca. I, I, I just wanna tell you that I had a great working relationship with Anne Marie when she was the interim superintendent, and, um, you guys have really, I remember when some of you encouraged me to go out and meet Matt and work with him. I think that the district is in a tremendous position right now, and we're gonna move forward and do great things for our kids. And again, we just wanna thank you, the Board of Education, we have a small token of appreciation for each of you.
Thank you.
And I'm under my time.
Two minutes, twenty seconds.
Thank you, thank you.
Time, time and everybody.
Thank you.
And, uh, and that's all I have to say, maybe I'll go on a little extended hiatus now so you won't have to see me again, Mister White. Thank you very much.
I don't mind seeing Mister Burns, I really don't. Just gotta keep it under control there. All right, it's the first sentence report.
Thank you, Mister White. John, thanks for the kind words. I'm not sure how to take the draft pick thing because you're a Cleveland Browns fan, but I will, uh, I will run with it. No, it's very nice of you to say, and, uh, it's always nice to have a good relationship, um, with, with all of our units, but we work really closely with the teachers, they have the largest group. And, uh, John and I meet every week, rain or shine, to work on the issues, although when he was in Ireland, we, we did not phone him. We left him alone for two weeks, so it's good to have you back, and thanks, thanks for, uh, those comments. Just wanted to highlight two things, and I'm gonna try to work the board goals into it like I always do. Our fiscal goal is that superintendent collaborates with the Board of Ed, uh, to develop a budget that increases academic offerings. And I don't have that written down, I think that's mostly from memory there. So, uh, where we've done a lot of collaboration right now is on the capital plan. We have a capital project vote on December fifth, and we are doing everything possible to get the word out. We had two, uh, meetings with P T Os already. We met with the Rombell Middle School P T O and we met with the Glenon P T O. We had good turnouts for both, uh, and good conversations, good questions were asked. We had three board members at each meeting, that was great to have your support as well. Uh, so that also meets with our community goal, where we, uh, engage and, and interact with the community, uh, around different initiatives that we have. And so with that in mind, we're gonna be visiting, uh, the four other P T Os, uh, in the next couple of weeks. On Wednesday at seven o'clock, we'll be in this room with the high school P T O. And then we have two community-wide meetings, and so this is really just kind of open to everyone. I know the P T Os have kind of been open to everyone too, but these are specifically with that in mind. Thursday, November sixteenth, at Beacon Rec Center at seven o'clock, uh, we'll be having a community-wide meeting on the capital project vote. And then again, right before the vote, or a few days before the vote, on November thirtieth, Thursday, seven o'clock, we'll be back here in the high school. I will briefly go to the, uh, city council meeting, uh, right at the beginning on November thirteenth to kind of plug the community-wide meetings. I found that was an effective tool back in July when I publicized the community conversations. And again, we are more than happy to talk about this project, it's very exciting, and, uh, and it impacts all of our schools, will impact all of our students, so it's a really exciting thing to talk about. And then the other thing is we have a professional learning day tomorrow, so just wanna say thank you to the community for letting us have that. We put it to good use. We will be going from eight thirty to two thirty, working on curriculum, we're gonna have grade level teams, and especially at the elementary level, departments at the secondary level, working on some curricular goals. We, uh, have our special ed department doing a, a day-long training on various things. Then we're also weaving in a lot of technology, uh, professional development. What's really awesome about tomorrow is it is entirely led by our teachers and administrators, especially our teachers. That's always something that I love to see, I love to be a part of that, and, uh, and Beacon does a great job with that. So we have a lot of teachers stepping up and leading different sessions, and some administrators, including myself. Uh, I'll be doing a session on trying to use Twitter as a professional learning tool, so I'm excited about that. So, so, uh, I thank the community because, uh, kids do not come to school tomorrow, so we can have this event. Even though I am in charge of the district, I kind of neglected to talk about this at home, and so we were just discussing a couple of days ago that we didn't have school. So it kinda came up a little late in the game, so, uh, I'm just gonna send that last reminder out there, no school tomorrow, uh, for this professional learning day, but we are really excited about it, and thank you, and thanks to Anthony for the time.
Community reports and board comments. Mike?
For the, uh, for the Facilities and Operations Committee, uh, the, Matt went over some of the, uh, capital plan, um, sessions that we're gonna have, public sessions we're gonna have, and I do plan to be at the high school this Wednesday, so I'll be here, I'll see you there. And, um, the, the next Facilities and Operations Committee meeting is gonna be Monday, uh, the thirteenth of November at seven P M. And that's all I have.
You said seven P M, I'm sorry, Mike.
Seven P M.
Seven P M. Meredith?
I attended the Chevron Glen Mills meeting, um, it was a month ago, and it was extremely well-attended, I think compared to the other, uh, public meetings they've been trying to have. The room was quite full with a lot of questions, um, some of them pretty aggressive, like the, the community is really trying to figure out what's going on there, and ask hard questions, um, and I think the Chevron people heard them and, and, um, were kind of excited that actually they had managed to reach the community, and as it turned out, they reached them through the mail, which is just a, you know, we should all be aware, people still do look at their mail, because they, they had advertised in the paper and done all of these other outreach things, um, and then sort of as a last minute decision, they, um, they mailed invitations to all the people in the, um, in the neighborhood and the room filled up. There is another meeting on the fifteenth at five thirty, it's again a public meeting. Anyone is invited to attend Ed Set Slater Firehouse, five thirty dinner is served. And, um, so I recommend attending that as that project continues to push forward. Um, there, we had a curriculum meeting, there's another curriculum meeting, uh, also on the fifteenth at two forty-five, is what it had? I wanted to just make people aware that there are, you know, we're doing this eighth grade trip to D C. It's the first one in twenty-some years, and, um, there are some scholarships available. If you want to support the B T A to, um, to contribute to the scholarship fund, you can always give directly to the B T A. If you like burgers and fries, they're also doing a Five Guys and Fish Kill fundraiser, November twentieth from four to ten P M. And I don't know exactly how that works, but some amount of money spent there will go to the Rombell B T A, P T O for the, um, for the eighth grade trip. And, um, the only other thing, tomorrow's, it's also election day, don't forget to vote. And, um, the last thing is, in terms of Twitter, I follow all of the, um, I mean, all of them, but I try to follow all the schools and athletic departments, um, on Twitter, because it is a great way to see what's going on in the schools, and, uh, you should definitely look up Mister Cameron making a blindfolded basket at the pep rally, because it was truly amazing. First, it was amazing to hear my son describe it because he was talking about how quiet the room got, because it, he, they spun him around, he shot the basket, it bounced on the rim, and then it goes completely quiet, and it's like when it goes up and then it goes in the basket. It's really great, um, so it's another reason to go on Twitter and follow some of the people. And we need to, if we're gonna be competing against Mister Cameron, we need to be practicing for the next, uh, ballgame.
Oh, that's a good point.
Yeah.
Get in trouble.
Anthony?
Okay, I, I don't have an exciting report, um, but the, uh, the, uh, I attended the Undoing Racism, um, training, and I'm actually still unpacking from that training, um, and I will, um, use some of the, uh, information from that to help in the diversity committee. Uh, it was challenging, it was, um, um, it, uh, there was knowledge at the start, there was, um, prejudices that were questioned, and, um, so I'm, I'm, I'm still, I think, you know, even, well, it's already been a week or so that I'm still unpacking from that, so, it's a very, um, interesting training. The next diversity committee I've, uh, rescheduled for Tuesday, November fourteenth at eight P M. This will give an opportunity to have, uh, some of the administrators come to the meeting, uh, talk about, uh, what we're gonna do for Black History Month, and also talk about the power of the forum. And, um, the next technology committee is, uh, November twenty-eighth at four P M.
What, what time is it?
Four P M, eleven twenty-eight, seventeen.
Any questions?
Yeah, good. Thank you, go.
Yes, Thursday was the Dutchland School Board Association meeting, and that reminded me that I had been, uh, missing my duties. I had forgotten to mail out the, uh, the PowerPoint presentation from last one, so I did it this morning, so apologies for waiting so long, but you all should have in your inbox the, uh, the presentation on how to read financial forms. The last meeting, uh, there was two things we discussed. One was, uh, we, we did have, uh, Mr. Jokowski, who was, uh, Dr. Foley mentioned her, she's the, uh, the new hireee for Bosse's, uh, is the special ed position. She did a presentation, not so much a presentation, it was a question and answer session on special ed services that Bosse's gives. There was two-handouts for that, uh, once again, they were papers, so once I get the digital copy of it, if I remember, I'll, I'll send that to you. One was just, uh, acronyms used by special ed, so that was, you know, just like the, take any permutation of the alphabet and that's pretty much what, what it looked like, a list of. The other one was just a, uh, a document describing the typical services that P P S offers for special ed students, just describing the various types of services that are obviously, interesting to see that as well. The other thing we discussed is that the Dutchland School Board Association is going to be putting on an event. It's, uh, it's, it's to meet with our, uh, state legislators, um, it's, uh, January twentieth, that's a Saturday, um, from ten to eleven thirty. The purpose of this is to, uh, have the legislators listen to, um, the school board and the administrators on what are the, are our issues that we have. It's, it's, this is not an event where we ask them questions and they just respond, and that's the kind of thing you do with people who are looking to run for office and you wanna know more about them, but these are already, these are our legislators already in office, so it's more of, uh, us presenting to them, uh, what are our issues, and, uh, and then just seeing, making sure that they're educated on them, so they know what, what, uh, what are the, uh, the challenges that we have and what they maybe can do to address them. We're kind of looking at three broad categories, one is equity, um, and that can be equity in different areas, you know, state aid, of course, there's always an area where, um, different districts get different amount of money, and it's not always, seems to be based on any, um, rhyme or reason. And so, uh, we wanna discuss, uh, uh, equity, whether it's funding or, or, or other aspects of education, um, you know, where they're focusing on, on one area over another, or, or. you know, where they're focusing on one area over another, or one district over another, or even within a district where you might have inequities between various schools, and perhaps because of things that are coming down from the state. The other thing we want to look at, talk to them about, is funding. And of course, that state aid also has to do with the two percent cap, and you know, what are our issues and everything that we have because of that, and what are our challenges. And third thing is, is just want to find out from them, what is their support for SED? Because a lot, there's a lot of things that are actually, rules and regulations that come out of SED as opposed to legislator, legislative branch, but they're supposed to fund SED, you know, in order for SED to do its job. So for just one example, is, we all know is that for capital projects, it takes forever to get something approved by SED, because they say that they are so understaffed. So, you know, it takes months and months and months to get your projects approved, which is, you know, an issue for us. I mean, you know, how much it's cost at the time you present the project to SED, and by the time you get it back, it could be totally different. So that's just an example of, you know, we want to just sort of press the, our legislators as, what are you doing to support SED in the areas where they, where they need it as well? Because that's, if they can't hire people because there's a freeze and that's affecting us, here's how it's affecting us. So the idea is that we want to discuss these topics with them. We would like to get actual examples from various school districts, which means maybe having an administrator from central office or even from at the building level come to present their story. We think that it's better than rather than just have the board members talk, it's, you know, in general terms, it's better to have some actual live examples of here's how it's affecting us, either adversely or poorly. And so we're going to be asking all of the school districts to see if they can have somebody come to the meeting, not only just to have numbers, because the more people that are there, the better it is for, in terms of show of force with our legislators, but also just to come up with some concrete, you know, stories and examples as opposed to just hearing things in theory. It's better if you can actually point the ways things are, you know, hurting your district.
What's the date of that again?
January twentieth.
It's January twentieth, that's a Saturday, from ten to eleven-thirty. It's at the Marriott on Route nine, it's up near Tampa, Virginia. There'll be more information coming up, but.
So can you send that an email?
They sent it.
They sent it. You should have seen it.
They sent it.
Tell them.
Okay.
Thank you. Craig?
Thank you very much. I think we used to call these superintendent conference days, now it's professional learning day, is that the preferred term?
We changed that when Matt got here.
That's great. I like that, that's an upgrade, because it really describes more of what's really going on. And I looked at the agenda.
It was in the contract, Craig.
I think you wanted it changed.
It's superintendent day, the professional learning day. You put that in the contract, that's an addendum. I'm joking.
So it's a good move, and I like the great diversity of topics in the curriculum. Looks like everybody will have plenty of choices to go to. So I attended two meetings of this capital program outreach where we met with a couple of PTOs. Interesting to hear the comments and the questions. I hope that people are indeed asking the real questions that they have, they should do that. There'll be other opportunities to do this. I hope we publicize them nicely so that people know that they can show up. And the website component, I think, could use a little more publicity as to how to find the information. I attended the sports program evening that was held by John Diometta to introduce a lot of the coaches and brief a lot of the parents on what kind of offerings are available in the current season. A lot of good conversation was had, a lot of questions answered, and I thought it was a good event. I also wanted to say at this point, I should put on the record of a program that is, I like to say, bubbling up through the ranks, so to speak. And the working title is Beacon Wind Residency. Beacon is obvious, wind refers to wind players, residency refers to a professional group coming in to the school to work with students who are in the music program. This is certainly not final, it's just in the development stages, but in the interest of transparency, I think it's good to talk about it, because it looks like it has a very good chance of actually coming into being. This emanates really from the Hallenstich Chamber Music Circle, which has done a similar program in the Arlington district for a number of years. And it requires some funding. We're looking at various options on how we can pull together some money for this. And if we are successful, we might even be able to do it in the next semester. There's a lot of interest that has been expressed professionally, our music coordinator, Michelle Beakley, and our high school band teacher, Peter Head. I have met with myself and Dr. Landall and Nancy Hall from the Chamber Music Circle, and we are trying to put this together. And I'll keep you posted as we go through the steps. Thank you.
Kristen?
The Wellness Committee is meeting this Wednesday at four P M. And to that point, Karen Gignano sort of spearheaded this Big Apple Crunch program, which was all the elementary school kids taking a bite of an apple at the same time. And Glennam Elementary won, is it a thousand dollars, Andrew?
I believe so.
Thousand dollars and from, is it a farm? I can't remember the name of the organization.
I'll look it up for you.
What they did was they put all four hundred kids outside in the back of the school in the shape of an apple. And I believe Anthony DiMato stood on the building and took a picture of them. And they submitted that, and in all of New York State, Beacon won for having the most innovative approach to the Big Apple Crunch, which is a cool project and a really great thing offered by both New York State and, you know, picked up not only by our food services director, but also our principals. And it's really exciting. I know something kind of came up on social media related to school lunches, and so I think anybody who's interested or who has concerns, but also really wants to actually, rather than just air concerns, help be involved, I think you should come to the Wellness Committee. A lot of things get discussed there. I myself feel like I've learned a lot, not just as it relates to nutrition, but also I've developed such a great appreciation for our director of food services and all our really hard-working food service staff. And this deep mountain, they have to climb every day over and over again to make sure that our kids are fed and hitting their budgets, hitting their government requirements. There's always room for improvement, and I think they would be the first to say that, but they've done such a great job. And there's a lot of partnerships that are happening at that committee, so if it's, if you're really interested, that's a great place to start. I attended a capital project meeting at Glennam. I have one note, which is, I think it was really well-done, and you guys did a great job. Dr. Lardoni did a great job. I do think that your best bet for a warm-up, guys, send Anthony in a little bit ahead of time, ahead of Facilities and Operations, because after everyone left, no one wanted to stop talking to Anthony DiMato. Everybody wanted to ask him questions about buildings and things, and he, it's, I guess, kind of like having a capable person who knows about fixing things. It was, I felt like the PTO just kept asking him questions, so, and they really were relaxed and then asked a lot of questions about the capital project as well. So he's, not only is he very accessible, but he's a great warm-up to that audience. I want to thank the district. Today is my daughter's tenth birthday, and it relates to the district because she had a great birthday, thanks to the Beacon City School District. She went on a field trip to a farm, and in the afternoon, Hudsonella Shakespeare came and performed at their school. And those are the things that you remember, are the things that are kind of a break from the everyday routine, and made it an easier day for me, and made it easier to come to a board meeting since she had such a nice day at school. So I want to thank Beacon Arts and Ed and the district for bringing Hudsonella Shakespeare, and I want to thank the teachers who tried to get in one last field trip before the weather got cold.
Thank you.
Kristen, so I can give this, yeah, it is called Farm On, and it's sponsored by New York Apple Association, so that's the grant.
And then they sent the apples, right? Wasn't it, it was some partnerships with local farms. It was a really cool thing, the picture was really great.
It was great, yes.
It was so nice that the director of facilities got up on the roof. Maybe I should have took that picture.
Kristen?
Okay, I just want to remind you that the Policy Committee meeting is meeting on Wednesday, November fifteenth at eight fifteen, following Facilities. No?
No, we were on the fifteenth, they moved to the thirteenth.
Okay, so at least.
So it says policy from eight fifteen, nine fifteen, so.
Saying we're still.
Say that again. You want to do November fifteenth?
We were supposed to follow Facilities on the fifteenth, at eight fifteen.
Facilities is moved to the thirteenth. So you can do the fifteenth at any time you want.
Can you mean at seven?
Seven.
So seven.
Okay.
Thanks for a little bit of meaning. That's it.
I'm just updating, I'm sorry.
No, I'm sorry.
Ken?
So the Policy Committee, no, not the Policy Committee, the Public Relations Committee did not, it doesn't have a meeting scheduled. The survey is out, I don't really know how well we're doing with them coming in, if we reached a cap or something. Dr. Lardoni, would you know?
It's, the response rate's been good, so I think we're just going to try to do a little bit more with paper copies, but I think we should be ready to roll in a few weeks.
Okay, so we'll just, I guess, send it, you want to send it in?
Um.
Want it to be in November or December?
It could be the last week in November.
Or is it after the meeting or for closing out the survey?
No, he said a few more weeks for the survey, because we have a paper copy at two other locations, so I'm saying it's a meet to actually get the paperwork, start to review it, and end up.
We'll enter the paper. That's, yeah.
Okay.
So November.
I can't give you a date right now.
Okay.
I'll give you.
All right.
And then the Safety Committee, I believe we're going to meet on the thirteenth, but that hasn't been finalized yet.
I'm going to finalize it tomorrow morning, but we're aiming for them that morning.
Okay. And then I think you just have to update the district calendar, because it still has a diversity committee meeting, was listed as the ninth for November, and then the Facilities Operations meeting is still listed as the fifteenth on the district calendar.
We just got that information tonight, so we'll work hard making sure that's updated.
What time on the fifteenth is the safety?
We don't know, it's going to be in the morning.
I just got a confirmant from Mike.
Yes, we don't have a time yet. And then on the eighth, Beacon High School will have the capital project presentation, and there'll also be a Q and A from the Guidance Department. I just want, you know, the community to know that the PTO, PTA at the high school works really, really hard to try to get information out. I think that sometimes when kids get to high school, there's a little disconnect there, but there's a lot going on. They had the NHS fundraiser at Outback Steakhouse, myself and Georgia attended, and we had a really nice time. We saw some administrators there and other students and teachers, so it was, you know, a situation where, something that you really want to support. So, you know, stay tuned in to the high school, because they're doing some great things there, and they need a lot of parental support to keep things going. They also have some fundraising activities at West Point, and they definitely need volunteers to keep that going. So if there are students out there in eleventh grade, twelfth grade, who are interested in volunteering their time, they should reach out to the PTO. Parents are looking to get their kids involved into something that is constructive, that is a place to actually start. And then the Q and A presentation from the Guidance Department is on things that you may not know, but the Guidance Counselors will be available to answer questions. And you can also email Kim Lennon with questions now, and she'll answer you back via email if you can't attend the meeting.
Okay. Sorry. If the policy's going to be at seven, I didn't pick the fifteenth because it was packed, but if, I may, I want to actually, want to maybe follow the Policy Committee so that we don't have to make these many nights.
Eleven fifteen.
On diversity, yeah. So.
I'd be happy with that.
Yeah, makes sense.
Thank you for condensing it to a night, I appreciate it.
Yeah, that's what I was saying, like it was too many.
I'm so happy right now that you did that.
You owe me.
My wife is happy right now because you did that, so I appreciate it.
So we'll go from eight.
Eight fifteen.
We'll be at seven.
Fifteen. You'll be at seven.
Seven to eight, and then so eight fifteen. Okay. And then we just need a date.
All right, so, sitting here listening to all the committee reports, I want to commend, this is how I envisioned the committee reports being disseminated to the board, and it was very succinct. Everything was awesome. You guys did a great job, the chair people and the board representatives for each committee. I loved the way you guys reported it out tonight, it was like awesome. The first thing you started out with was the date and the times, and then you went into what's been happening at the committee reports, and it was a thorough report. I do appreciate it, it makes the meeting go nice, succinct, so you guys did a phenomenal job. Also, you guys have been attending a lot of events, the Capital Project, because that's going to be a, the Belmont, not the Kentucky Derby, you know, a longer race with it. So we're going to continue with that Belmont race and go on, and the tours with the Capital Project. I'm hearing good feedback from the district constituents and stuff, so it's going really well. I have nothing else to report on, but I just wanted to give you guys the phrase. All right, so we have the consent. The use of the consent in terms of support of education makes more effective use of its time by adopting a single motion, calling those relatively routine matters which are included. Any member of the board who wishes to discuss individually a particular piece of business on a consent, may so indicate, and that item will be considered and voted on separately, thus preserving the right of all board members to prefer on any issue. Is there anything on the consent that a board member would like to be pulled? Eleven twenty-eight. Any other items? All right, hearing none. I need a motion to approve the consent, minus eleven point oh eight.
So moved.
That was Kristen.
Second.
Georgia. That's twice, Ken. I said that twice. Any conference of questions? All those in favor?
Hi.
Opposed? Motion carries nine oh. I need a motion to approve eleven point oh eight.
Motion to approve, I am eleven point oh eight, approve agreement with Stephanie Harvey Consulting.
Is there a second?
Kenya's the.
Kenya?
No, Georgia's the.
Conference of questions?
My question is that in the second paragraph, it refers to the services that are going to be provided under this contract, it refers to a letter, Beacon City School District Proposal of Literacy Initiative with Stephanie Harvey Consulting, a copy of which is attached here too. But I didn't, we don't have a copy of what those, it was not attached.
In the contract?
The contract itself is a separate letter, which only talks about the fees and the, you know, those conditions and some dates, but it doesn't talk about the actual scope, you know, what is the scope of the contract? And refers, specifically refers to a document which says it's attached, but is not actually attached.
This is like deja vu, I know this was the same question last year.
I went back and looked at my notes from last year.
Erica, were you the facilitator of the contract?
Yes.
I know this is the third year with the Stephanie Harvey contract, can you go into the details of what she'll be doing during those three days?
Yes.
Come on.
So if you recall, last year when we met in September, we started with the consultant coming in to actually work with each of the buildings, doing demo lessons or model lessons, and then supporting teachers afterwards to, just to discuss the lessons that they actually saw. We were doing that to provide professional development across the district. It was a model that was used the prior year, which was two thousand fifteen, sixteen. By January of two thousand and seventeen, we went away from that model, because we felt that our teachers were beginning to understand the strategies that were in the Stephanie Harvey toolkit. So what we did is we, we wanted to really look at our curriculum, which was something that when I met with the board. that when I met with the board back in, in, I believe it was August, oh, no, excuse me, yeah, the beginning of August of two thousand and sixteen, I stated that one of my main goals was to have an aligned curriculum across the board in our elementary buildings. So what we did at that time is, we put a elementary curriculum team together, grades K through five, and we began to really develop a curriculum, which we still in the process of developing at this time. So what the consultant has been doing since then is working with each grade, team of four on each grade level, one, one teacher per building, and we've been just creating our curriculum, which we're gonna have at the end, at the end is gonna be called our Beacon City School District Curriculum, where we are aligning Stephanie Harvey's comprehensive toolkit with the Engage New York modules. That's been an extensive process, because what we've done is, we've really taken apart the modules, to see what we've needed, what we want to keep, and what we wanna throw out, and we put strategies to it. The comprehension, the Engage New York modules is the actual, although it's the meat, is really just a understanding of social studies and science curriculum. We've using the, we're using the strategy from the toolkit to access that, that information that's in the social studies and science curriculum. So at this point, each grade has about two to three units that have been completed, or two to three modules that have been completed, the goal is to have four to five completed by the end of the school year. We're also using the consultant this year to continue the work that we've started with guided reading, which you've heard Dr. Hooley speak about earlier, so we're gonna continue that work later on in the year with guided reading, something that I've started in each of the buildings this year, you know, with modeling for our principals and for our reading teachers, and it's, the consultant will come along and support that work as well.
And that's all, and that's the detail that's in this document, the Beacon City School District Proposal of Literacy Initiative with Stephanie Harvey?
Yes, that's what we're doing, yes.
We, make sure we, you know, attach it or we'll keep it with the contract?
That's, that reference is in the contract, yes, so those two documents are together.
Okay.
That may not have been spelled out to that extent, you know, from what you're saying, they, they just put their, the base work that they're actually doing, but we've been, like, I'm in communication with their consultant, so she's just waiting, she knows what we'll be doing, or what she'll be doing.
I just wanna make sure the contract is clear, it has a clear scope of work, you know, and then it's all attached together, so that we, we know what we're paying, you know, that we're paying for.
Yes, understandably.
Eric, my question to go along with it is, this is the third year that we've been using Stephanie Harvey as a consultant.
Yes.
Are we gonna, is this something that we're going to be continuing to do every year with her, or is this where we're gonna be like the last stage, where we're gonna begin some independence with her comprehension toolkit?
Right, yes, so the goal is to, to slowly move away. Back in two thousand fifteen, sixteen, and I kept a document with me, I shared it with the board last year in September, it was a hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars that was spent on professional development, and that's, that was just, that's not even including the materials that were purchased at the time. Last, last school year, two thousand sixteen, seventeen, we cut the cost, they had a proposal in place for seventy-eight thousand dollars. We decreased that cost by thirty thousand, we only paid forty-one thousand dollars for the work. So this year, we're proposing twenty-nine thousand dollars, almost thirty thousand dollars. So what we've been able to do essentially is, we've been able to cut the costs from where it was originally for seventy-eight thousand dollars last year, we're still, this year, we under budgeted with forty-one thousand dollars last year, and thirty thousand dollars this year, is at a total of seventy-one thousand dollars.
And I didn't mean to have it have a, like, I wasn't supportive of spending, I think it's a relevant source to spend money on, having a comprehensive reading program throughout the district, and I think this is a systemic, this is the first one that we're sustaining for over a year.
Yes.
So it's a three-year suspension.
Yes.
But I didn't know if it was where we're always gonna need her to develop that piece, because I know, like, she came out with a new book.
Yes.
Last year that was supported with Scholastic or ASCD or something, and so I didn't know if it's something, which I'm fine with either way, I didn't want it to, I just didn't know if this is something that the board could expect to see as a PD for the teachers yearly, because we're sustaining this comprehension toolkit as an instructional piece.
Not with the elementary schools, the goal is to move away from it this year, and that's why towards the end of the year, wanna focus more so on guided reading, but then we'll have a look at what's taking place in our middle school, I'll, I'll look at that again, and see if we need to bring someone like her in to support our middle school, or if it's something that I'll be able to sustain on my own.
And, 'cause I, I personally think the outside eyes are beneficial to help the teachers in modeling, and that, and it's good yearly, but I just didn't know if the board could expect to see this on a yearly basis.
Right, and the only reason why I said I'll see in terms of the middle schools, because being that I was at, I was at Forest Duke during the time when he originally came, I didn't really see the work, per se, that was being done with the secondary schools.
Well, I commend you on getting something that's been sustained over three years, where we've been changing year to year prior to that, so...
Thank you.
Any other questions about what we're doing? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Did I do it first and second on that? I did, it was, yes. I need a motion to approve the addendum to the instructional agenda.
So moved.
That was Kristen.
Second.
Second, Karen. Comments and questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried, nine oh. I need a motion to adjourn to executive session.
Motion to adjourn to executive session to review the employment history, history of a particular individual, and the board is not expected to take action after executive session.
Ken?
Oh, Georgia.
The second?
Second.
Craig? Comments and questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thanks so much.
You should.
It's not a term of exception.